Welcome, folks. Welcome this evening. Um, tonight, we want to open this September 12th, 2022 school committee meeting, reviewing our application, the school committee's application for new elementary school to the Board of Selectmen for tomorrow. So, we sought feedback from the community. Actually, I should back up there. On August 30th, we submitted our application to, for new elementary school on August the 30th. And the feedback we got from the school, the select board was that they were going to leave it open to gain, to gain more insight or feedback from the community. And, and they really wanted essentially more direction from us. I think you folks watched that video. And after leaving that thing, I thought, you know, I don't want to personally just wait for feedback. I thought it was important for us as a school committee to be proactive and seek feedback. Therefore, I wrote that very brief little invitation, invitational letter first to the school population, but also sent it out to the patch and posted it on Facebook. And we got 101 responses from that invitation for feedback. So tonight, I thought we've got a couple of things to accomplish. And that is, one, are we going to submit our application to the select board? Is, or we're going to make some amendments based on our feedback from the select board? So I thought we would simply begin. But first, thank you for the folks in attendance here, but also we invited folks to also participate via this Zoom meeting. And we request that if you would like to speak or have a question, please raise your hand and put your screen on and pose your question in person via Zoom, if that makes sense. Does that sound clear?
And that we won't be taking comments via the chat or question and answer, simply because not everybody can see it.
Yes, yes, thank you. So we are, we are going to accept Zoom questions, comments, et cetera. Raise your hand, put your camera on, please, and we will pop you over. All right. So, first, folks, I'm hoping that you got to, school committee members got to read the feedback. And I thought we would begin, it's really going over the feedback and what we gleaned from it, and then talk about the application and whether or not we're going to make any amendments to submit for tomorrow's select board meeting. Does that sound there?
Sure.
All righty, so.
Sorry, Anna May?
Yeah.
You speak up a bit louder, people can't hear you.
Should I move that thing a little closer or just speak up?
Sure. I'm manager, if I might, yeah, start with, because I've been kind of going through and coding and.
Oh, yes, sorry, Jess, one thing, because people had a hard time hearing me. So I just want to repeat that. First of all, thank, thank you to those of you who are on Zoom. And if you would like to participate and ask a question or comment, if you could, please raise your hand and we will pop you over. And if you could, please have your camera on, please. All right, now, Jess, thank you.
Um, I think that, as I've been going through the feedback, what I mostly see is that there are many, there are many people who offered some feedback on the educational portion of the application, but there were more people who were kind of wanting to weigh in on location and process speed. And it occurred to me that, again, this ends up being kind of where, where we were in terms of trying to really help the community understand that as the school committee, we are responsible for the education of our children. The school building committee, which is separate from the school committee, although we'll have members of the school committee on it, will not, will not make, I mean, the school committee will not make those decisions about best building, best placement, everything else in a vacuum. In fact, that is part of a larger process. Currently, there is not a school building committee. I believe that the AG is looking at the bylaw that we passed in, is that special town meeting or annual town?
Annual.
Annual. Looking at that bylaw, see if it actually meets the guidelines that the state has for different boards, authorities, if it meets their needs or their kind of level of diligence in that. And I don't know very much about that at all. However, I understand that people really do want speed. We would like it too, but really can't do anything on acting around site or anything else until the town itself, the committee composed of its citizens, weighs in and investigates over time. But this is my other impression on the feedback is that regardless, I think, most people want a school. People do not know whether they would like a renovation or a whole building. Generally, the people who gave us comments about the educational plan itself focused on the first or second bullet points. So focusing more on whether reconfiguration upgrades and unifying into one location for some of our schools would be something that they would be willing to consider, given our thoughts about transition. Some people were under the misimpression that we were trying to stuff everybody into one school and one enormous kind of behemoth school. And I just want to say, I wouldn't do it to my kids and I wouldn't do it to yours. So there is a plan to this and an understanding of child development and an understanding of trying to mesh resources and use the resources that we have at hand to the best way possible while keeping our kids, keeping our kids engaged and feeling safe and feeling as though they're part of school family and not constantly popping in places. But that was my general idea is that people were open to reconfiguration in general. Very few people, you know, felt like they wanted to go back to the level of divisiveness that the town experienced over this again. And there were a number of people who felt as though we were offering a retread, although within our application, at no point did we say that we wanted to be at one location or another. And I think it's important to address that personally and probably as a committee. We have offered this proposal, honestly, and with positive intent. We just want a school for our kids in the best way possible for the best of our town as well. So I think that's my general and overall thought, but I do think it would be helpful. I would be happy to develop and then talk to you and Dr. Marson about kind of some of the misimpressions people have.
Yeah.
About the process or specific questions that have been asked kind of over and over again.
That would be helpful.
Re-reduce that.
Yeah. Show it, Tim.
Sure. I, I want to thank the Medfield community for taking the time to submit feedback. I really appreciate your time and value your thoughts and opinions. And I feel like this is an important step to kind of get us where we all want to go. I've read through the comments, some of them, multiple times, trying to find common themes and trying to find commonality amongst folks going on. And I feel like, I did feel that the majority of the, the majority of the comments, like a gross amount of the comments, generally people want a new school and recognize the need for the new school. And then after that, it felt like a lot of the comments kind of became pretty divided and like, you know, you have one comment that said, I want X, and the next comment say like, not, definitely don't do that, right? So the kind of contradicting each other throughout the thing. That being said, I kind of feel like there were a couple of themes that were very prevalent in, in the space. Time, I think, is a very important one. And Jess, you just kind of addressed that. But I think in that same space, some of the comments or requests would add a lot of extra time to the process. And I feel like we have an aging and an alien building right now that we need to figure out how to fix for the current students, for the future students. And we can't just keep being in this place where we keep pushing it down the road. We just, we just can't. Like, the building needs help, real help, big help. Communication with community engagement is another thing that I know has been coming up over and over and over again. And I feel like, I feel like the challenge right now is, I don't know, we, not just us, but like the future SBC or like the town overarching theme. I don't know if people fully understand how people get their information, right? We can keep holding these types of forums. We can keep inviting the public to these places, but if we don't understand where they're getting their information from, then we're just going to end up in the same spot. So I don't know if we can find out that people are getting their information from the bus stop, like we need to figure out how to make sure the bus stop has the correct information. And in that front, I felt that one of the comments in here was actually very insightful in regards to trying to tackle that challenge. They spoke about, and I feel like Tim touched on this a little bit, like kind of more finding subgroups of population. The individual talked about different things in regards to like reaching out to different age populations or different neighborhoods, but kind of finding those subsets and getting feedback and buy-in from smaller groups, right? So instead of having these big, you should come, you should come, you should feel like you need to come and be a part of this. Like, I think that could be an interesting way to get a cross-section of our population and really help everybody understand that. In that same space, that's going to take extra time. And I just, I feel like they kind of compete against each other, and that's a little concerning for me. Cost was another major theme that I felt was very prevalent. I don't have, I don't have an answer for that. Like, I don't have an answer for cost, but I recognize that cost is important. I think finally, like, as a parent with a child in Dale right now, and as a parent with a child who will go to Dale, and as a parent with a third child who, I don't know, kind of depends on how things go. I really want to make sure that we're focusing on what, why we're here. We're here because we, as a town, value education. We value the Medfield Public Schools. And we need to be putting the students and the children first when we're making these decisions and thinking about these things. And I speak as a parent who is there right now and on behalf of the parents I saw this weekend, you know, on the sidelines of the soccer field and at the birthday parties and at the bus stop in my neighborhood. Like, this is very important. And I just hope we can figure out a way to communicate and come together and figure this out.
Thank you. Tim, did you want to share what you gleaned?
Yeah, I think, one, I do agree, I was pleased to, opening it up with the 100 plus comments. It was good to read and just get a, get a better feel. You know, same thing, you know, same themes you talked about, speed, cost, location, configuration. I think the thing that student population, I think that, I think that jumped out at me when I participated remotely in that SBC meeting last week was process and roles. What's the role of the SBC? I look at the SBC is out there to review what we're, could call it our requirements, what we're asking. See, you know, kind of run it through the design process. Ideally, come up with a design that the community supports, you know, to a, through a two-thirds vote. And then they would continue with, through the bill. So I look at our application, I think that is one change. We call it an application, absolutely agree. We tried to be fairly open-ended. And I, you know, there was a lot, there were some comments saying, oh, you seem to be going back to location and all these things. I'm not going back at all. The job in my eyes as a school committee member is get to a yes vote, right? An acceptable score. I view the job of the SBC as to get to a yes vote as well. But when I listened to that Board of Selectmen meeting the other night, I didn't hear that. Sometimes I heard the builders, they have to build a building. And we have to be very specific with what we're building. And I think that's hard. I think that SBC, those 12 individuals have to come together at the beginning, right? For us to say, you know, some places that we must, we should say, put it here, this exact number of students. There's a lot of factors that need to come together. I think if that SBC can't unite on something, the project will be doomed, right? So I just look at it as, I felt we were fairly open-ended in the application. I think that's by design, without an agenda, without an agenda other than to get to a yes.
A yes of an excellent school that will serve our town, too. It doesn't have to be perfect.
Yeah, I mean, if, if.
And it won't be perfect, right? It won't be.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I don't, I just, it's not clear to me that, is that the role of the SBC? And I went through it, went through and read the bylaws on Friday. It kind of circles around it, but as, as we go, one is an application, then we have to, you know, we're going to define or we're going to look for applications for the SBC. When they all come together, what are we asking them to do? You know, and I think it's more than design and build a school. It's design and build a school that the community can support and that, you know, we, we can support. So I think we're trying, theory. There's a lot of, there's some accusatory or we could do better, we could do it this way or that way. Yeah, there wasn't an agenda. I didn't have one. I sat with, I'm not aware of. So, so I think that's the disconnect that I see with the process as we nominate that SBC. Are they trying to just design? If we need to give them very, very specific specifications, that's what the role of the application is. Then we, it's probably going to be a while, because then we have to get more input. So because we better get it right in our application.
Yeah, as, as it stands right now, one of the things I want to point out is that, again, if the new bylaw should actually be, should be approved, and I have no reason to believe it won't be, it's just when. If that should be approved, then much of that decision-making about who is on that committee in general is entirely out of our hands. We have our two seated members who must be, two members who cannot have concurrent terms. And then we have two members of the community that we may pick, but have some open-ended but specific qualities to them. Again, we're all trying to work through this bylaw that nobody has ever actually tested or means tested to see how it will work. But indeed, if out of a, out of a committee of 12, we, we have, you know, input into about a third of that. So, okay, you know, like, then it becomes a town project. And those people need to be representing the entire town. And I hope that they're able to. I also hope that we are able to get professionals who really know school building projects, like we had that kind of professional bank. I honestly don't know who, who's being tapped, who's being looked at for any part of that right now, who might choose to step in to what's been a pretty divided process. Maybe this second time around will be chill. We won't, I don't know, right? I think that all we can do is continue to pursue and focus entirely on our, focus on the educational goals that we have right now and present them as honestly as we can. And then let the SBC, with our participation, because we'll be part of it, to, to really make those decisions about what best site placement is, how that will work, right? So we'll have participation in that, but we will not have this kind of, you know, only the school committee decides this. Everybody else is just at our whim, which was never the case anyway, but.
Yeah, I, you know what? I really thought this was an important exercise. You know, we were really opening ourselves up to a whole lot. And I.
Including some unusual positions that we were asked.
No, but that's, that's okay. We asked for feedback. We got feedback and everyone is entitled to their feedback. So I already think that we're beginning this process in a new and different way. We are seeking information. I've shared, we've shared this information out with the public already. And I've shared this with the Board of Selectmen and with Scott McDermott and with Christine Tru. I think this is really important feedback for all of them to see as well and not just for the school committee. Because as Jess noted earlier, our, you know, what we're tasked with are, is, is the educational component. But I feel, I also feel like, one, the big theme that came through to me was, we're pushing another WELOC, and I want to say unequivocally, we are not, absolutely not. I believe, I firmly believe that we want to start fresh. There were some really intriguing ideas out there that people submitted, whether it was, you know, related to configuration, how to, you know, the taxes, sorry.
Command, because I paid it a comment. There's one, I'll read one of them.
Okay.
It said, as an aside, after much thought, it might make the most sense to build a new four or five building on the site of the FAFF Center. Attempt to integrate the most favorite parts of Dale, the gym and columns into the new building. This also preserves the open field between Dale and Memorial. Reconfigure Memorial into a two-three building for great continuity, hopefully not requiring major work, and renovate WELOC into a pre-K through one early elementary center. This also preserves the ability of fourth and fifth graders to walk into town on that phase. So I read an idea like that, and I say, I like that idea.
Yeah.
I, I like that idea, but I think if I wanted to pursue that, I don't have any control over what happens at that center. I know I, you know, and if I were to be that specific with my idea or what, you know, what the SBC is bringing forward, it may not allow the SBC to do what they need to do. So I think, and I don't mean interrupt your point, but when I read that one, I think that, to me, represents the conundrum of our application. And some people are saying, be very, very specific. And I'm not passing the buck, but I think that SBC does need to come together at the beginning.
Yes.
Because it is a divided process, project, you know.
Yeah, and I want to, to, to remind ourselves, you know, we, we, as a school committee, we really wanted a three, four, five school. That's, you know, we, we did our due diligence. We thought this is really what's best for our kids and for our town. But then the pandemic hit. Then reality, a new reality, reality set in. We had to pivot. We had to let go of that desire, and it was upsetting for some people. But we felt if we have any chance of this school passing, there is no way we could have a three, four, five school. So that's another example of saying what we want, but the reality is, we can't have, we could not have that. So I view this application as step one. And to give it, you know, really the breadth it needs for the SBC to work with. And we have work to do as well in terms of analyzing the numbers, what, you know, the configuration. So we have a lot of work on the school committee side. However, I really view this application as just the launching pad of a lot more work to, to get done. And so at this point, I'm hoping that if anyone here present would like to speak or if any of the attendees, oh, sorry, before they do that, sorry, Leo, would you like to share what you gleaned from the 101 comments?
Sure. I mean, I reflect some of the comments I just heard now. I apologize for my tardiness, meaning that I could not move. You know, I was taking away some of the, I saw some of the comments about it being another WELOC proposal. But I feel like that the, you know, the MSBA submission is just that. It is, you know, the process, if, if accepted as an NSBA project, we will have to engage with that again, right? That is the process, the feasibility process. I am, I am hopeful that we can reuse some of the materials and the research done in the previous one, because so much was done. A lot of the questions that were asked on there about options, about renovations and using the Dale site are all in the original documents. I mean, all the schematics and layouts there, which, you know, that was more accessible, you know, in that sense. You know, back to that site, which is still posted. I've steered, steered a lot of people there, you know, with the pricing for renovation and everything else is all there. So, you know, obviously that, but I'll have to redone because that's now a few years old and therefore, and I know it has gone up. So I saw some of those comments about that. You know, I feel like, again, that goes back to that information, you know, sharing and being aware up until the last minute kind of scenario. So, and I reflect your comment that it is not another setup to be at the WELOC site. We are looking for continuity in our education. Another study around the resurgence of K-8 schools across the country to keep that continuity, you know, having neighborhood K-8 schools. So I thought that was very interesting as well. So us looking at a campus model is not out of line by any stretch as far as research goes. Not to mention, I like some of the comments that were, you know, people were thinking like, hey, let's build a real big school so we can merge things together for, you know, you know, less number of administrators and everything else. And although I've seen those models come up, Easton's a good example. This, the Olmstead schools, attached to another school, the Easton two elementary schools. You know, it's still access to different schools. You still have the same number of administrators. But the idea of people thinking outside the box, I think is great. And the flipping of schools, I saw another comment that said, you know, if we're going to bother going through this, you know, let's get the WELOC school taken care of too, right? So I said, that's a great idea, you know, feasibility at all the buildings, I think, is definitely in line, regardless of what the application process is. I think the SBC should look at all of our school buildings and requirements. You know, and, you know, and continue to share out the information, because it was also information about, you know, the, the care of the facilities and everything else. And we all know that there's been a well-flushed-out plan and the deferred maintenance in all of our buildings that was presented just two years ago. I can't remember what that number was. It's on Michael's top of his head, but I want to say it's on 25 million plus.
It was 40.
40 million, yes. So, you know, something along those lines. Including those streets. So there, you know, there's, there's been a lot of work that has been done. And I think some of those questions bubbled up. So, but I also thought there was a lot of good thinking outside the box. Is there? And a lot of identification around, you know, the space to conduct education like it should be. And frankly, everyone knows in this room that that's what I focus on. I don't want the politics get in the way. This is about space we need today. And frankly, I still hold standby that we can't wait for the MSBA process or the SBC process. We do need space right away. So, but I am glad that, you know, people took the time to respond for sure.
Thank you, Leo. So at this time, would anyone like to share their comments?
Or on Zoom, raise your hand.
Yes. All right, so we'll keep an eye on that. And at this time, can we take a look at the application itself? And if we can consider, if we have to make any. And if we can consider, if we have to make any changes to the application. So, um, I'll just, maybe I'll just go through the first paragraph. Everyone should have a copy of this. First paragraph, the word application is in there. So I think that's acceptable. Everyone good with the first paragraph?
Yeah, actually, can we just kind of go back up just for a second? Given the feedback that we have here in which, because let's really take a look at, at what feedback came back specific to the ed plan that we have that was not based on location speed or anything else.
Okay.
I have generally either positive, and I'm, I'm going to scroll through all. Or people at this point, kind of the majority of people would say whether they liked the, whether they liked the plan at all. And there were very few people who just said, I don't like the plan based on the merits of the plan. They just said that they felt like it was a retread.
Yeah.
But in terms of the points of the plan, most people were okay, I believe, with either reconfiguring grades. Figure.
Yes, because we say the Medfield School Committee submits this application for the construction of a new elementary school or
Right.
the renovation slash addition of the Dale Street School or other current elementary buildings as identified by the school building committee. So I think that encapsulates.
I think that encapsulates what virtually everybody here said, except for the people who just feel like nothing should change. And there were a few people who said that they just didn't think we needed a new school at all, but it was very few.
Very few.
I think people on the whole
Yeah.
want. And so I, I would feel, and I think just as we go through, I want to make sure that we are actually really specifically bringing up examples.
Okay, that, that's fair.
But.
And then the last sentence, we strongly believe that it is in the best interest of the community and its students for the school committee and the school building committee to examine the grade structure of our elementary schools. I think that's fair.
I think it's fair.
We need to do some work. School building committee needs to do some work and we will work together. So, okay. Then the next paragraph, the previous SBC spent several years collaborating with MSBA on comprehensive feasibility study as well as schematic design for the new elementary school. While the project as proposed failed in November seventh, twenty twenty one, special town meeting by four percent margin. There are aspects of the vision that continue to be valid and important in consideration of our community's future needs. So I read that as saying we can still use information that we gained from the last project, not recycling it, but the whole project. But taking information that we learned.
And that that is the SBC's job in many ways to look at what's valid and what's no longer valid and needs to be updated. I mean, I think that's reasonable to, to present to them.
Yeah, all right. So no other comments? Great.
The only comment, so somebody questioned, was it a four percent margin greater or smaller?
Yes.
To me, I don't know that it's extremely relevant. Somebody wanted to know what happened in that vote. Take a look it up. Seems to be like, nobody's being nitpicky by describing that.
Yeah.
But that, you know, that's bothers people like, if we don't say it, creates confusion. It's a myth to me.
Yeah.
I mean, it bothered one person, but.
To me, it's, it's me, it's more about looking forward and not looking backward. Right? That's, that's to me by like, it's just to say, I, I like the word vision. There are aspects of the vision that continue to be valid.
Yes.
Important. And that's really what we're highlighting. That would be my only point is like, I want to look forward. I think the SBC will continue to say, hey, what's the best interest of the community to get to? Yes. With polling and all kinds of things. That was my only.
Michelle or Leo, do you have any? Yeah. I thought it was just the one. I'm fine keeping that as is.
Yeah.
All right. The first bullet, the new project must provide the district with future flexibility for grade level configurations. I think that was universal pretty much. This flexibility has been, has become increasingly critical, both in our present circumstances and as mandates for early, uh, early childhood education become a reality in future years. Medfield Public Schools, so that is alluding to the possibility of full day K mandates.
Right. So I think at this point, we do have a mandate for full day K for the people who can afford it. There will be a time in which we will do, we will be mandated to full day K for everyone, which is.
I just wanted to explain.
We also, yeah, but we will also be required to do pre K at some point.
Yeah, absolutely sure of it. So Medfield Public Schools must have the space and resources to accommodate, accommodate the cyclical one or two grade surges it experiences regularly. An example of which may be seen in our current pre K and early elementary programs. The district has had to historically make sacrifices in both community desired and revenue generating program offerings as well as in class size.
Would we all continue to agree with that? Do we think anybody here disputes that?
Any new project must take into account how these factors at the earliest stages of education will impact the elementary school, uh, system, elementary system as a whole. With this application, we should say, not proposal, correct? With this application, the school committee takes into consideration potential enrollment fluctuations due to near term residential building projects in town. I am proposing, we just put a period after enrollment fluctuations as cross out due to near term residential building projects in town. Because we always have something going on. Okay, so period after enrollment fluctuations.
And fluctuations don't necessarily mean fluctuations up. Quite often it can mean fluctuation down.
Yeah.
Up or down. Grade, but one other grade, since we've talked about so often, then it becomes larger and it really does affect our space.
Yeah, a couple of comments with like, oh, that's a little misleading. You could, you know, we're contradicting. So anyways, I think that clarifies that or tries to at least. Bullet number two, in a reevaluation of the initial plan as well as factors raised since that plan was proposed, the committee and administration identify a unified setting of at least two elementary schools as equally high priority of a new elementary school or renovation addition project.
I continue to agree with that. I don't think. Somebody else have any thoughts or teachings to that?
Um, I am suggesting that we scratch out equally high priority. It's a priority. I, and, and I'm happy to discuss. Again, this is a trigger for folks, but we are hopefully using this evening to explain that this is not necessarily. We're not predis, prescribing a mega school.
I know. There are a couple of people who really thought that we were building like one big school.
Yes.
I mean, I think, you know,
And that's not.
By its very definition, if we have Memorial and Dale Street in close proximity to each other, but we choose to perhaps change the grades.
Yes.
Then that becomes a unified with, a unified campus. So, you know, I don't think we should back away from that. I think it is a high priority, right?
I think the.
We might think about changing grades based on that.
Like what this also kind of, I guess signifies for me similar to what she just just said, but like, we don't feel like it makes sense to go build on some random other plot of land where we don't have a school nearby. Right? Like that is going to be a drain on resources. It's going to be a drain on a lot of different things that are necessary for our school system. So I, I agree with you that I think the concept is triggering to people and I'm hopeful that we need to hear it explained what that actually means. We can help diffuse some of that fusion, I guess, around what, what, what the ask actually is.
Because between the two proposals that people were thinking about, the Dale, Dale proposal and the Wheelock site proposal, both of those were unified campuses. Nobody ever said that Dale was going to have a wall between Memorial. It was simply about how, how that would be done, where it will be built, in what area it will be built. So we are not changing anything particularly about our vision, nor is the rest of the town necessarily.
I just wonder, is it a different way of saying that? Because I think in the comments, people just read that at Wheelock.
Yes.
They just read that as a site selection. My brain was just thinking like a unified setting at the Dale or Wheelock campus.
I don't think that's fair to the SBC.
Also, I think that it's also, the MSB, MSBA is still going to make you do the type of evaluation of all the property. They will not be pigeonholed into it either. So if they, if we do with fact one.
Yeah, I would be surprised if the MSBA would take us at this point and.
I am too, but anyway.
I don't know that we want it.
So the other, the other two is like, if, you know, we're going to do another strategic plan and outlook as well. You know, in the event that neighborhood schools came back as a plan, then we don't need to have them next to each other, right? Although I don't recall another piece of land at the last review that was suitable for standalone building. Aside from the hospital area or I couldn't remember what it's called. It's pretty landlocked. It's hard to get in there. So.
Crown in property?
I don't remember. It's a while ago.
Yeah.
I'll have to buy a parcel of land to finally get the town to, to land build a school.
Oh, my God, if we have to buy a parcel of land.
Well, I think a lot of.
Sorry.
I guess my point is like, you can't say that there's not even that available.
So if you take a minute, like the driver behind it is the following sentence. Unified setting minimizes transitions for students and increases opportunities for staff and service collaboration.
I guess that's what I'm saying. Like, right now, we're doing this because of the current grade configuration. That is, that's the driving factor is to reduce transitions. The other way to do that is to shift back to neighborhood schools, right? Which would be a major opportunity.
Well, it would also be an equity issue.
Across the board.
So all of a sudden we'll be three.
How you communicate, to Jeff's point, is how you communicate that, you know, with our current, you know, grid allocation to facility scenario. You know, we would like to minimize those transitions by forming a campus hall, right? Of some sort. You know, or a three grade building, this helps with that too.
But how, so folks who are watching this or listening or will watch the recording of this will say, in theory, hopefully, okay, I get it. They're not, they just said they're not trying to shove another Wheelock project down our throat. Um, but folks who are just reading this, by reading this alone, would they realize that that's not what we're looking for?
Clearly not based on a hundred comments.
Exactly. That's my.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I'm fine with changing it. I don't know how. You know, it, it is kind of what it is, right? And even when we've quote wordsmithed it, we end up getting kind of feedback that, that we're just wordsmithing and that we're going in the same direction again. But the fact of the matter is, is that two buildings in close proximity to each other should ideally also share resources and allow more kids to have more access to more modern facilities. That's not a bad thing. You can't tell me that's a bad thing. You can't tell me that's a terrible idea. I'm not going to buy it. So we can wordsmith it all we want to make it palatable to people, but the fact of the matter is this is an educational plan. We don't want to trigger people, but I honestly think by the amount of complaints we don't get. There are a lot of people who feel like, okay, let's, let's try this. Let's kind of work it out, right? They're not getting triggered. And I really actually want to, I want to say that that using the word triggered in this context is a little disingenuous because it really is news for people.
Yes, no, I, I apologize. Yes, yes, yes.
But I just really think, I don't know how to wordsmith something. I mean, it's, it does become that like, it becomes disingenuous for us to say, we want it all in the same place, but we can't use any of these words.
Yes.
How do we do that?
Yeah.
Driver. Like, is it important to us?
Sorry, what did you say?
Remove the term at least two elementary schools. Unified setting is equally, it's a priority, high priority. It's a little more direct, right?
Yeah, that's right. I go keep, like, to me, and even, I don't know if I were to look backwards, I thought unified setting was important. I think, I think for, for purposes of, you know, staffs, increase opportunities, staff and service collaboration work more efficiently. And, you know, maybe it's minimize transitions or ease its transitions. There's a lot of goodness to that.
I agree.
And then for somebody to say, because we want that, we want, we're trying to stuff a school somewhere. If they want, if that's the hill they really want to play against, it doesn't really matter to me.
So, I mean, I feel like I'm kind of, I'm backing out of this particular kind of verbal thing. So I, I honestly don't know how else to say. We think it's important to minimize our kids' transitions and the best way that we possibly think of to do that is cost effective. Way we're in a town which people are kind of invested in having their kids go to school together.
But, but I'm saying, yes, however, I think people are reading this. This is what I gleaned from the feedback that we're building a mega school, so there are no transitions. I mean, you've got two different schools on once, there are still transitions.
So, so go ahead and, I mean, smith it how you want to. I just, I, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah.
Like what you're doing.
Like, I think there's enough in there. Eventually I go back to the second to last paragraph, which is, we look for the methods, the school. To working in partnership with the school building committee in the community to bring a project forward. There's needs to be some flex there, right?
I'm sorry, Tim, can you, can you repeat what you just?
Well, I was just, I was just saying, like, there has to be some flex built in. Whatever exact precise words you put in here, it may change.
Yeah.
Open to that.
We are open to that, yes.
I guess Anna Mae's point, you know, I'm just going to throw this out there. The fact that we got so many comments on either it's Wheelock or it's a big school tells me there's some confusion in the communication, right? So I don't know what we're going to do to change that, but it's clear that if you just read this and don't watch the meeting, that you come to the conclusion that it's either a retread for Wheelock or we're looking for a big school, because too many people put that up or not to be true.
Yeah. You know, what if we just took out the words at least? Say we went to schools in one place. However, we do that, amen. Right? I mean, that's really, that's what the SBC is going to do. We say, we think that this is, this is a priority. That we are able to have two schools in one place to share resources and that that makes sense, right? The sharing of resources makes sense. I don't, you know, a pre K K and a four or five together doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of sharing resources. But if we do a three, four, five, well, in the parking. I mean, like.
Yes, yes.
So I don't want to get stuck on this, but I do want to say like, let's just.
All right.
Get rid of our qualifier.
All right, let's just.
I couldn't see that.
In that for a second. And then the, as Tim just noted, a unified, the second sentence. A unified setting minimizes transitions for, for our students and increases opportunities for staff and service collaboration. And then the last sentence, the committee also acknowledges that within the lifetime of the building, there may be a contraction of school, of the school age population, allowing the district to further consolidate its elementary structure.
It was a bigger school.
Yes, that exactly. So.
People read that.
In my notes, I'm saying, do we need to prescribe that? We're already saying flexibility for grade level configuration as the first bullet. Do we need to go into the committee at that last sentence? To me.
I don't.
I think, I think it depends on what the community feels as transparency. Do we need to elucidate every single thought that we have? At this stage? Or do we, are we later again set up or failure because all of a sudden the community, or members of the community say, but, oh, but you didn't say that in your initial application, right? So. So a, as some of the people on here said, you know, you're in a lose-lose proposition a lot of the time. So.
So.
Do we say what we want, what we think is best? But, or do we kind of dance around it and then say, this is what we would like. We think this is a priority. We don't necessarily have it. Yeah. Or do we just take it out of there? And then all of a sudden it becomes this thing where we're being, you know, for, for being dubious.
So I don't know, but I'm just saying, if we have the sentence in there, what does it give us? What, what did, like, what does it give us, like, I think up until then? If it eases the perception that we're seeking a mega school, I think that's a positive.
Well, why don't we simply put in that something in there that says that we are not looking to consolidate into a, an enormous mega school that this would be about.
Because the conspiracy theory, somebody would say when they say they're not looking, they actually are.
And again.
So if you just eliminate it.
To some extent, it's like, damn.
We needed a little humor.
Damn if you don't.
I know, I know, Jess, I know, but I think in, you know, um.
You don't have to convince me. I'm just saying.
I know, but.
I need to argue the other side.
Yes, I, and I agree. And I think that's why we're having this discussion. And that's why this is the point of this evening.
Don't forget, this is just one application to MSBA, right?
Not.
Just like.
For tomorrow night.
So that they will just do.
And they said they were going to vote it in. I mean, you know, in terms of.
I don't think it matters.
But I do, I feel like we've gone, we've gone through this work. We're getting the feedback. We should, and we're talking about it. So I think this is positive. However, however, we end up, and I just want to reiterate, one, we are not proposing a new WeLok mega school. Two, that we want to be flexible and that we have more work to.
I guess ultimately this ends up at the NSBA, those part of the application process, right?
If they even.
If they come back to it.
Yeah. If it, I don't, I don't even know that that's an issue right now, but, okay.
I guess I just don't want to paint us into a corner with that funding. I think that funding is going to hinge a lot on the success of the project being looked at. People are saying it wasn't about the money, but I know it was. So I'm very, very worried that the tax increases could play a large role. Without the assistance, I just don't, I'm dubious.
I like, there were a couple of people who talked about tax, um, uh, you know, with the elderly. It, it was just some interesting, this is not for us to decide, but I thought that was. Yes, exactly. That's why we're sharing this information. I thought that was interesting. So back to this second bullet. So in my mind, I'm, I'm wondering if we could delete that last sentence from the, it acknowledges that within the lifetime of the building, there may be blah, 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 because I believe that the flexibility for grade level configurations feed into that. But I'm open if you're saying, I'm just, you know.
Can I just put a word up there? Sure. How about this? Should, within the lifetime of the, this, the building, the elementary school age population decrease or decline significantly? People are always saying, we, we spend a lot of time dicking around about, you know, ten here or twelve there, but really significant decrease in population, child population.
The district.
The district and town could, but, uh, responsibly use its.
Evaluate maybe.
Responsibly evaluate whether, uh, two schools, two elementary schools would be, I mean, that's, you know, it, I've always liked that sentence because I do think it acknowledges that there are people who believe that the school population has not increased and that it is going to decline so precipitously that we're kind of out of our minds for building. I don't, I don't think either one of those things that are completely correct. But if we are lucky and again, responsible with our resources, we are building a fifty-year building. And fifty years ago in Medfield, things were half this population. So I think that we need to demonstrate that we are thinking forward to the end of the life of this building and that we are thinking forward to times where we may need to be able to take a building off line for major repairs. And I always joked that WeLok and I share a birthday and that building has not had really any major work except for eating system.
Can you repeat your edits for that?
Unlikely. Anybody remember? Um, how about? You can type really fast. Did you type fast enough?
I didn't.
Okay, so, um, now, does anyone else want to come up with that? I got, uh, committee.
So, I'll just.
Yeah, the committee acknowledges that within the predicted fifty-year life of the building, there may be such a significant contraction of the school age population that the district would or might choose to consolidate its elementary structure. You know, uh, elementary structure.
I should take it on our phone.
Well, I mean, we do actually have video.
I know, but we have to edit tonight. It's submitted tomorrow and vote on it tonight. So, um.
I just look at it to a certain degree of saying, we're trying to give fairly open-ended.
Correct.
Application.
We're also trying to demonstrate that we do think long-term.
Yes.
And we're entrusting that the SBC is going to be doing that as well. If the SBC were to conclude, hey, we want to make sure we have that flexibility.
I came up to the last SBC, I believe that's where.
It did, yeah, it did. It was like the market sheet idea. It was, to me, it makes sense. It was like, yeah, that gives you flexibility. So.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Jess, we're on a roll. I do, I give whatever, within the life, life of the building, there may be such a significant contraction of school age population that the district may choose to consolidate its elementary structure. I wasn't trying to.
Right.
Can we add, like, I, I want to do evaluation after careful evaluation or some, I, I, you know, just adding that.
How about within the predicted lifespan of?
Yeah, you used fifty years, like, like editor's choice that, that's.
Yeah. Right, do you want to?
Yeah, but we didn't get to the, the last, I mean, you, you get to like two-thirds of it. And then you said within the predictive lifespan of a building, there may be such a significant contraction of school age population that the district may choose to consolidate its elementary structure.
It's into.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Just without words, then what happens? What happens?
Consolidates its resources into a two elementary school program. You did not predict this, for two elementary school. I, I don't know. Sounded really good the first time, but let's get rid of it.
So, so the only thing I'm saying is, I, I read that and I hear the same people are going to say, make it, make it a school.
Make a school.
And so.
Whatever.
Just where I sit.
Let's get rid of it. Fine. It's unfortunate, but it's not a hill that I am, if we tried to.
So you're, you're saying you're circling back as to what do we gain by including it? If we gain that we have foresight that something that may happen.
Right, we have long-term planning.
And we lose potential yes votes one way because they say, hey, they were thinking mega school. I mean.
We are not, which we are not. And we'll go out with this, you know, I mean, I think that's one of the misconceptions that we can release when we release a kind of the statements that were the responses that we've talked about tonight.
I don't. Yeah, yeah, no, it's not.
Madam Chair, I just have to say that I'm not sure, I feel as a committee member that any person should be able to fled from the audience and then contribute. If we had opened to public comment, that would be one thing. I appreciate that Chris wants to have input into this and obviously this is your meeting.
Yeah.
But I do not feel as though this is, uh, I just don't feel as though it's fair.
All right, okay.
But that's, it's your meeting.
Yes, I understand that. Uh, Chris, can you, we, before we do a final vote on the, um, on the document, I'll have you come up. Is that all right?
Yeah.
I, okay.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it.
I think that's the best way. Thank you.
And I would just say even before we do a final, like.
Yes, yeah.
Read through before a final vote.
For anyone.
So that we.
Yeah.
But I think that would be.
A little more of a focus on their specific.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So if you keep note of it, we will finish this and then we'll have you. Thanks, Jess. You're right. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, did we want to continue with that or did we simply want to say that we're?
Do you want to read what you've done, um, Tim?
So. It's. We're keeping the bullet as is. And then the debate was, are we striking the last sentence? Or do you want to, um, when you say read what we've done?
You're right. We don't need.
Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was, there was a minor bit in the language, but it was either we strike the sentence, leave the sentence as is, or replace the sentence, you know, within the predicted lifespan of building, there may be such a significant contraction of school age population that the district may choose to consolidate its resources into a two elementary school program.
That sounds good.
Um, Michelle, Leo, do you guys have strong feelings either way? Are we just digging into the weeds here?
I think we're digging a little bit into the weeds. Uh, I think this is a preliminary step, I think, to make sure to get back to Dr. Marsh's point. Or most of course hard just to be clear and transparent, ask, not to make it look like we're painting a committee into a corner, um, but to be very specific about what we're asking for. So at the same time, you know, the emphasis on the continuity, reduction of transitions. And, uh, yeah, and the fact that a mega, mega school is not the, uh, not the intention. So, uh, anything over four hundred is, you know, obviously also targeted, it's not, um, so, uh, my current research.
And that was stated in feedback as well. How about you, Michelle? Any strong feelings either way?
No, I, I guess I think it's interesting that people that knew there would be a mega school and then I personally never heard it before until reading this. So, um, sorry, the feedback and comments, so, um, how or do we address it? I mean, again, it feels like a new, building a new thing to, to be concerned about.
Like a new piece of pasta at a school. Yeah.
I think as a whole, my hope is that we're taking this feedback and adding it as like, sharing it with the select board, future SBC and adding it more like an addendum to our proposal.
Yes, yes.
Right? So like, I think it's, I agree that, I think it's good that we're taking this exercise and looking at everything, but in the end, I actually think it's less about us deducing what, what people's intent was when they were writing this and more about what we're doing right now in regards to like the educational pieces. But from this, this piece, I do, I do think it's so important, but I don't have, um, I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to die on the sword here in regards to like whether this sentence stays or goes. Because I think that there's still a lot of work to be done.
A ton of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot more dedication that the SBC will undertake, you know, as well, you know, throughout the process.
Four years from now, we're going to be giggling about how much we've looked at this.
Good golly, eight forty-five. Okay, um, so.
All right, let's just strike it. How's it feel, everybody? What's your gut?
I know. You know what? I liked the rewrite. I like the rewrite. And then I, I think it goes to that forward thinking, that's not going to be on our watch if this happens. You know, to, to that, I don't see that in the very near future.
But I don't want to tie somebody's hands thirty-five, forty years from now.
Yes.
I mean, I think we all experienced the repercussions of decisions that were made thirty-five, forty years ago still. So let's.
True.
I know. So, Tim, sorry, can you read that second bullet in totality?
Building projects and so.
In a reevaluation of the initial plan, suppose factors raised since that plan was proposed, the committee and the administration identified a unified setting of at least two elementary schools as a high priority, that's, I think, stroke and equally a high priority of a new elementary school renovation slash addition project. A unified setting minimizes transition for students and increases opportunities for staff and service collaboration. Within the predicted lifespan of the building, there may be such a significant contraction of school age population that the district may choose to consolidate its resources into a two elementary school program.
You could say it is possible.
Yeah, just the within, it's, it's minor, but, or instead of within, you say it is possible at during.
And that would be a natural occurrence anyway.
Yeah.
Folks, I mean, that's what Boston Public's dealing with right this second. Because people are moving out of city, coming here and the surrounding communities.
All right.
So they're closing buildings as a result. So I feel like that sentence we could put in, uh, by far. And I think that definitely is true. Like if the building is built adequately and they did proposed phases, right, to say, if our population were to hit X, we could possibly fit our kids into this new building and another building.
Yeah.
Or, or even reserve space for a future add-on.
Correct.
Just like you're designing intelligently.
As one thing, exactly.
All right.
This is one thing that could.
Third bullet, a significant inadequacy of, of the current elementary program across all schools is the need for non-grade-specific learning spaces and infrastructure for special education instruction, support, individualized instruction, hands-on learning, library media resources, language learning labs, and designated music and performance arts rehearsal and performance areas. These spaces are necessary and standard within contemporary educational building projects. I think this is a hundred ten percent yay.
Yeah. I mean, I think there was one person who made a comment that the only extra space we needed was for a full-time art teacher and a full-time music teacher. But other than that, the rest of the spaces.
Yeah.
Only need to be class, but I think other people.
Yeah.
Really acknowledge that we are desperately lacking that kind of space.
I think that's universal. Number four, bullet number four. Our schools serve as a community resource for many townwide organizations. A new elementary school or renovation addition reconfiguration must serve the community outside of the typical school day and calendar.
What about we say, uh, the committee envisions the building would serve the community outside. Is it a must or is it an ambition?
It does. I mean, our schools do now.
Yeah.
You know, we have that, we've got, right.
But is it a must or is it a? Right? Like people are always saying, you know, we're going to have this building, we're going to have that building.
We don't keep that in there. We can say we're ready to start.
Well, yeah, but nobody seems to.
Well, this is what Gus was emphatic.
So what did you say to Gus that you immediately said, oh, now I understand?
Yeah.
Do you remember?
Yes, because when, in the early days, when we were having those, um, no, not round tables, but what, what did we call them at the very beginning?
Division sessions.
Divisioning sessions, thank you. Um, a lot of, you know, and that was administrators, teachers, community members, parents, et cetera. Gus, um, and a theme came out of it as, as being able to use the building for, you know, outside its hours. You know, so for example, the last plan had the gymnasium, that, you know, the cafeteria in like one section and they could lock it off. So if on the weekends basketball teams wanted to use it, they could, we charge for that. So it was just a, a, um, a, a smart way of building a school so that at, we were not building additional spaces or infrastructure so that we could rent it out. It's just, this is how the school is, but this is how we'll plan it out.
And so I think.
That's the only thing we did was a bigger chair.
Yeah.
So. So I fully agree with. So I fully agree with the word must, but I thought that, given some of the feedback. That it was worthy of us discussing again, why did we place that as a high priority? So. I just wanted to bring that.
So what is your proposal?
Nothing. I, I just wanted to test how we felt about the word must versus vision. How important is it for us?
I'd rather a three grade school than a school that's designed that must serve as outside.
I was almost thinking must.
I don't, I mean, I don't want to.
Oh, I, I like that.
Continue to, it's just saying like that it's something we do today. We're continuing to do, we're not like saying, hey, let's do something new.
Oh, I like that a lot. So where would you put that?
Right after must.
Yeah. Our renovation addition reconfiguration must continue.
Right now it's map, you know.
Okay, great. So it's not like we're adding something new. It's, we're going to continue but plan accordingly. Okay. Lovely edit. Thank you. Next bullet, um. Final, the next school, the next school project should be a model for the town of Medfield's long-term energy and sustainability goals. A sustainable building will increase our ability to manage long-term climate change and the financial challenges that will accompany this reality. While also teaching our students each day about the importance of renewable energy and sustainable resource practices.
Can I ask? Aren't we obligated?
Twenty fifty?
Well, I mean, aren't we obligated to, to meet the town of Medfield's sustainability goals? And then you have sustainability goals and benchmarks around that. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So we're saying, I mean. I'm not saying that, you know, we're gonna make our kids walk around with solar hats to power their computers. But we should be able to be responsive to the energy needs that we will have in the future and the climate change that we are already experiencing if you have been. At the top floor of Dale or Wheelock. Or just pretty much anywhere in the world, or the high school.
But this is also SBC Board of Selectmen. This is.
It's about how they want to go. We are being, we, we feel that this is an important teaching point for our children. I also think, um, there is a. A considerable. And growing school of thought about how very anxious our children and our younger families are about climate change and the rapidity. And which is kind of, you know, it's a source of anxiety for many children. And then I think we just simply acknowledge that. I'm not saying that this is absolutely true in one way or another, but it is an acknowledgement and a societal pressure. And if we aren't saying that we want to be, well, we're thinking about that. So that our kids can have learning. Opportunities to do so.
So should we mention that, um. You know, in accordance to the.
I don't have my, you know, I don't have my, uh. My responsible, uh.
But I, um, people did comment on that, you know, in terms of the cost, but.
I think there's a time where leadership is important, and I think this is a topic.
I agree.
If I.
I agree.
To me, the, um. Lesser evil is including, just with, that's where I sit. I, I think it would be for me personally irresponsible. That was a big part of vision session too.
Yes, yes.
And I think that even. Even more so than in that original vision session, we are learning more and more realities of our reliance on some.
Hundred percent. All right.
I mean, it's also the way it's worded, it's not saying. You know, hey, absolutely.
And we can't mandate that as a school committee.
Yes, but we can ask to have.
Yes.
No, I agree with that. I also feel like, I think that the comments really varied. And so again, I feel that. Maybe they weren't taking a close look at the wording, right? I think saying that we're modeling for the town of Medfield's long-term energy and sustainability goals actually shows a partnership. And it's not us being one-off and saying, I've got to do this, like, it's important, like, it's working together with old that already been established in the town and helping us work towards those goals. So, yeah, I support this.
Leo, cool?
Yeah.
Good. All right.
One thing that, before I forget. There is, like, there's like each bullet has like four or five words that are bold. If somebody was to take a minute to scan this, they hit the bold, 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 maybe then formulate their opinions.
How much are painful?
I like bold, but.
I think that we were in. I'm the one who bolted it, um, simply because we had initially thought about how do we alert people as they're scanning it? To really understand what the specific points are about. But if we want to take it out, I don't care.
I like the bold for what we're discussing.
Yes, you're right.
But now that we've come together of what the overarching themes are that we want to be.
It would force people to read.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm one of them. I scan, you know?
I would, I would take the bold now. Now, I think it was very helpful when we started. I think now it's not necessary.
Great. Well, thanks, Tim. Right? Super. Oh, fourth. In April of twenty twenty-two. The Medfield Public Schools with the Board of Selectment Support submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA for acceptance into its building program. The MSBA process would allow the town of Medfield to receive substantial reimbursement for the project. Although the previous project's reimbursement of ninety, nineteen million dollars is no longer guaranteed. As of this writing, the MSBA has not contacted the district to inform us of our acceptance into the program in December twenty twenty-two.
And that remains the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in it.
There were a couple of comments about the MSBA.
Now we should be. But that's, that's different decisions.
Exactly. Yeah, I think.
This is just a statement. It isn't our, it isn't about priorities. That's just what it is.
All right, everyone. Cool. Great. Um, the Medfield School Committee submits this proposal. This application, well done. To the Board of Selectmen to expedite the formation of, of the SBC and with it begin in earnest.
But not Oscar Wilde's earnest.
Yes. E A R. Yes, T E. The work to provide our students, staff, and community with a modern learning facility that meets the specific needs of our town citizens. As well as their expectation of the highest quality of education. Cool. The school committee looks forward to working in partnership with the school building committee and the community to bring a project. To the town for a successful vote and completion of this much-needed modernization of an, of our elementary system. That's a great. Please see the attached ed plan and best recent SOI in depth support. Thank you for your consideration. All right, so at this time, I will open it up. Um, so folks on, in Zoom, on Zoom. If you have any comments to share or questions, please raise your hand. We'll beam you over and if you could turn your camera on, that would be wonderful. And Chris, I believe you had something?
Chris, my second question. I think that was really important. You know, there was all, a lot of talk about, you know. You know. This conception that there's a mega, the mega school. I mean, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the current numbers or whatever's posted on DESI. I didn't look at the most recent numbers, but they haven't changed all that much to, to, to change my point. If you add, if you go back to grade three to five configuration, which was originally planned in the first project. We're looking at practically a six hundred student school. To some people, that might be a mega school. Others, it may not be. So I, I take a little, a little worry that you're putting definitions towards that you really don't know what people are referring to. If you were to add second grade to Memorial. You would actually have a school based on the, the numbers on DESI, up to six hundred twenty-seven students, three K included. If you added another grade to Wheelock, so it was a two to three, four grade school, it'd be five hundred ninety students. So what I'm saying is, is that when people look at that. That could be considered a mega school. School committee really needs to develop a policy. It's not enough to say. That you want to have a significant reduction. If we have a significant reduction in enrollment, we will look at consolidating school. What does significant mean? And Leo mentioned the four hundred, you know, the, the, the. Immense research that shows what an ideal elementary school size is, three hundred, four hundred students. We have a class size policy. Why don't we have a building size policy? Because if we had a building size policy, then that would guide every single bit of decision-making as the school project goes along. And so, you know, you sit here and you, and I, the debate of it's a mega school. Or, you know, if we have a significant reduction, what does that mean? What is the definite, what is each one of you, I bet if I asked you, what is your definition of a mega school? You ask everybody in the community. What is your definition of a mega school? I guarantee you're gonna get different answers. Having over six hundred students in an elementary school. I can guarantee you it's not why people come to Medfield. We've heard that for such a long period of time. That you're just using all these like soft words without any kind of real meaning to that.
Okay, so Chris, I would say to that is that we have a lot of work to do still. And, and I appreciate your input. I, you know, I think we should take a look at that. But that's not something we can decide tonight. Tonight, we're working on the application, but I've noted that.
And I do think. I also put that in conjunction with neighborhood schools are more impactful too. So we are constrained by the current configuration of our school buildings. So. That's what we have to work with.
You are charged with making education.
You're absolutely right.
Absolutely.
What is educationally sound?
If that is absolutely true, that we should be talking about redistricting, they're just saying, Chris. I did, I'm hearing you say we need to redistrict in neighborhood schools. That's what I heard. So if that's the case, I think you should propose that on a future agenda item.
There are, there are school districts in Massachusetts right now.
That's requested an item to be discussed.
But I think that goes along to the work of the school committee in conjunction with the SBC to do more data analysis. So, yes, we will.
I'm sure you'll be a part of that. So I can definitely take up as well.
Thank you.
You know, and when you give public that, just for as a point of order, and chair, when you get someone, be willing to give public input. It really should be interrupted by somebody else on the committee.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, you're six over for you. I, I just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate. Everybody's in. I think it's really important that in this, uh, if this is an application, right, is to get the process started, right? And it's not to adjudicate the last election. It's not to get everybody all resolved. I think it's really important to get this thing started. Which is where you're trying to get to. I think it's also important to understand, we all are aware of the long process that this takes. So the items that you're putting up here, I think are helpful, and I think they're probably directly in response to the request by the selectmen. So I'm not going to get involved in the middle of that, but. These are just opening comments, really, right? And this is what the SBC process is going to go to. I think what the, what you want to do is get the committee. Formed, right, to address the big issue that came before, which was. It wasn't communicated. We didn't have enough participation. The process that is coming forward here, and I think you raised some of the important issues that should come into consideration for the selectmen. For the town moderator and for yourselves. As to who will be on this board to make sure that the feedback that you're getting now are addressing the issues that are being asked. Right? Because we did find out in the last election, that was the, one of the big issues was. Any information that came out, came out too late, it wasn't well communicated. We didn't have enough participation. That's what this new article is addressing. I think another thing that came forward very clearly was the cost issue. So. You know, if, if we don't know, we can even afford. What can you afford right now? Right? I mean, you, we could have to start, I think, with saying sixty-two million was too expensive. So what's it gonna cost less than sixty-two million? And what can you fit into that? So I, my comment is really basically saying. You know, all the details that you're going through tonight is giving you a good perspective. The fact of the matter is, they'll still be debated after this, right? And I know that at least there'll be two new school committee members, so there'll be more than enough opportunity. To have public dialogue during the election process, which is going to fit into this as well. So I, I can, I'm not sure exactly what I'm really adding to this, except to say that. There's a couple of words in there. I'd be careful with the word like a modern facility. I don't know, because I think modern was like a. A hot button. People, what, what does modern mean? You know, the stairs and all that that came out. So I think. What you might want to just be talking about is, let's build a school that meets the requirements. Of a twenty-second, you know, two thousand twenty-two. When you talk about the size of enrollment, that's all gonna have to be discussions that's gonna come up in the SBC. Because the point, the question on enrollment is, yeah, we could, we could plot it to a point right now. This is what we're gonna be. What's it gonna cost if we go more? What's it gonna cost if we have to add on? Put it down on paper? Give it to people, you know? But I think again, is, I think your, the input that you're getting now is very helpful to help formulate. Who is on this SBC committee? But the key to what your point is. Get the SBC committee there. And then just a personal statement. Maybe I shouldn't say that. I will say this. If you go to the SB, when you go to select board tomorrow. It would be, me as a citizen, I'd like to see more people than just one person. I know everybody has busy schedules, but. Come together as an SBC, this school committee would be very helpful in making that presentation. Not to say this is what our charter is. These are the thoughts that are out here right now. That's what I think this, this application should be saying. This is what our thoughts are right now. These are things we're building on. I'd be very careful about trying to. Differentiate or disseminate. Who said what said, what, what we think was passed and wasn't passed and why. That's irrelevant right now. The point is, we need a school, we need it now. We're not gonna get there until we get this school building committee that represents the total town. Allows for input.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? All righty. Um, so with that, Tim, I'm gonna ask you. So actually, we, we've covered it. I don't think we need to read it again. We've read every paragraph. So, uh. Any other comments on the application to the select board for tomorrow?
Just need to reiterate that really, this is about the educational portion of this. What we need is a district and that it will need to be. We know that. That there will be adjustments. Over time. We just know that. But if we don't put it out there now about what we feel we need, then we will never, ever have the chance to achieve.
I agree with that. This is about the core values, right? Smaller class sizes, spaces for special education stores, or kids that are sitting in alcoves.
If they're lucky.
Music, you know, music can be conducted in a, in a space without interrupting classes. You know, it's about the important, very fair, very focused things, right? So, and I, you know, I kind of hear what Bob said about the term modern, right? And they paint the. You know.
Sorry, can I just hold you for a second? Owen, do you mind popping over JB, please? They've got their hand raised up. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know, maybe that, there's. And I will try to make it.
Okay, thank you. Um. All righty, so do we have a motion to approve this amended version of the Board of Selectmen? School committee application for a new elementary school. So move tonight. Do we have a second? Second, Michelle, Kirkby. All right, all in favor? All righty, very good. All right, so we will submit this tonight, hopefully. Alrighty, very good. All right, so we will submit this tonight, hopefully, those of you who can come, will come. As I said, I've I've shared these comments with them and with Scott McDermott and Christine. These are important. Yes. Can you share that with Andrea?
Yeah, I agree. I didn't paste the whole back, but I think I. Yeah, did you write anything?
Sorry.
Did you write anything?
I finished the bowl.
Did you use your pen?
I did.
Yeah, between, if you want to share that with.
Okay, yes, of course. All right, beautiful.
I do want, I'm not sure, are you gonna close the meeting?
Yes, so all in favor. Did I ask that? Sorry, did you want to say something, Tim?
Is there another agenda item?
Well, just briefly, the last agenda item was the process for to start discussing the process. Because I am anticipating that this will be passed tomorrow, I'm hoping. And then we will begin our. Plea for folks to apply to serve on the SBC. But we also need to, school committee members, and I don't think tonight we're not selecting. However, I didn't know if people had thoughts of how we should go about selecting that person, etc.
From our. I think we should just probably indicate our interest to you eventually and then bring it to the committee.
Okay.
As an agenda item, so.
Yeah. So yeah, members.
Go look back at the minutes and see how we did last time.
But yes, to just kind of indicate, you know, our. So if anyone is interested to reach out to me. And it just caught the people on the same cycle.
At which point we'll just have to draw straws.
If only. All right. And then I'm hoping tomorrow night, the Board of Selectmen, I I believe is gonna talk about their process as well. I had given them them the example of Long Meadow and how they did their process and their application. And. You know, they used one application and checked off whether you were interested in applying for the, to represent the school committee. Or the, you know, the select board, so.
Yeah, I mean, I really do think that it unified. Kind of baseline of qualifications and understanding about kind of the perspectives that people bring.
Yeah.
For all three kind of groups, we have most important and the most transparent way that we can end up doing this. Yeah.
Any other comments on that?
Tomorrow night, I have a conflict, but there's nothing I can do. But I think, just like I mentioned earlier in our discussion tonight. It would be worthwhile as we bring the application forward, just to ask the Board of Selectmen, what is their view? On the SBC, build a building.
Yeah.
Take the application forward, collaborate with the community, design a, you know, design a winning bid, open bid for all.
Yeah.
And by all means, we need building expertise as part of it. I just didn't hear that.
Okay.
So I think it's worthwhile just to.
Very good.
We're gonna also ask for people to serve on this SBC. What are we asking the SBC to do?
Okay.
And I'm assuming the application process will be a public one, so people should be reminded in the application of whether they're featured or not, that their their name will be listed perhaps somewhere. And just so they're aware.
Yes.
About that.
Yeah.
Because people may not be familiar, right, case.
Yes.
Just to be aware of stuff like that.
Yeah. All right.
Um, can I, can I briefly mention, just in reference to our previous agenda item and the feedback?
Okay.
We released to the. Public a version of this that has no names or emails, because that is kind of how we posited this kind of feedback form. However, and also going forward. All communications with the school committee with public officials are subject to record requests. And if somebody should feel as though they absolutely needed to know this or any other. Piece of information that that could be requested. And I think, you know, because I I personally consider this part of the public input when we ask specifically. Specifically for. Input on a form, I I consider that part of the public input process. And ordinarily, we make the people. Who do that come up, pronounce their name, their address. And I I don't want people to to feel as though the people who come to the meeting have to take more risk. Or more concern about expressing their opinions than people who fill out some of the comments. And I, and I do have to say some of the comments, I'm not sure that if there was a name attached to them, that they would make the very same statements. But maybe they would, I don't know. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was. You know, it was expressed, because I don't want people to be going into this thinking that. Here's no possibility that anybody would ever see.
No, absolutely. Great, great. Thank you for bringing that up. Alrighty, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, second. Second, Michelle Kirkby, favor. All right, we'll see you guys Thursday.
Or tomorrow.
What's tomorrow?
Isn't it slick?
Oh, yes, but I meant as a.
As a formal thought.
All right, thank you. Thank you, folks, for joining.